Yep, we're ready. Are you recording?
Everything is recorded.
Okay, all right. Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting. The exits are marked right here in back of us. This is the first meeting of the combined plant, what was planning board and zoning board, so I would like to welcome everyone and say I look forward to working with everyone. My name is Deb Hext. I am the chair of the zoning board. I would like each of my members to introduce themselves, starting with my left.
Sal Tesong from the zoning board of appeals.
Bob Freeman from the planning board.
Danny Ramirez from the zoning board of appeals.
Simon Litton from the planning board.
Barb Mulfielder from the planning board.
James Sullivan, alternate from the zoning board.
Thank you. We also have with us tonight Gary Goss, our building inspector, Tressa Matulowicz, our liaison to the village board, and our village council, Allison Phillips. Again, welcome, everyone. Allison, did you want to do a little intro?
Sure. So this is the first meeting of the combined board. You guys are now going to be responsible for all of the authority that's delegated under the zoning law to what was the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. Now, this combined board will have that authority which would cover review of subdivision applications, applications for special use permit and site plan, applications for area and use variances, and also appeals from determinations of the town's code enforcement officer. So it's, it's, it is a lot of authority that's delegated to this board under the zoning law. Each time we get a new application, we can discuss exactly what the parameters of your review are and what kind of jurisdiction that you're, you have with that particular application. It will vary depending on what application is before you. For example, an appeal from the code enforcement officer's determination versus a review of a special use permit. The things you're going to be looking at with each application is different, but it's clearly spelled out in the zoning law, and we will, you know, provide assistance to the board as we move forward just in, in reviewing these different applications.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Allison at this time? Okay, then I will get to the first topic of discussion, which is to review a special use request from Eric Crans and Jen O'Connor to build an accessory dwelling slash in-law apartment in the footprint of the current garage, which is in disrepair. Do we have any questions? Is the applicant here? Oh, okay. Hi. Do we have, do you want to come out and just give a quick, you know?
The microphone?
Yeah. Should be a little button on top. Just introduce yourself and, you know, just give us a quick rundown of what you plan on doing, other than what's in the application.
All right. So Eric Crans, Jen O'Connor, Jen is actually a Kirk, who, her family has been in the house since 1904. So we, we, as you can see in the document that you have, we have pictures of when, when they built it, which is around like 1910, I think. So it's just falling apart. And our plan is to rebuild roughly in the same footprint, keeping, and actually improving, I think, the, the shape of it a little bit, so it matches the shape of the houses and the house and the shed, and then making it an accessory dwelling. Right now, it only has electricity, so it would need to have sewer and water brought out to it. And the, the intention is, you know, Jen's parents are in Gildon here, and they're getting older. We'd like to be able to have, we don't have a first floor bedroom in our house, so it's, this would be a first floor, you know, accessory dwelling that they'd be able to access easily. So that's the plan.
Right. One thing of note is, and I don't know if you've done this yet, but as far as the water and sewer, you have, you have to petition the village for that.
Okay.
So you would contact the village clerk, and she would get things in motion, contact Jeff Muller, our superintendent of public works, to get that going for you.
Okay.
That's not something that we can approve here.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Simon?
I, I do. The, the New York DEC EAF document says that that property, and I'm not sure from what, from, from what you've submitted, whether it's in it or not, but the property is partially in the 100-year flood plain. And I'm wondering if that structure is in or not in the demarcated area.
It's not in. The front corner of the, the main structure, the house, is in, or it was in, and then we did a letter of map revision to have it removed. We brought in a, a person to do one of those, what do they call?
Surveys?
Survey, thank you. They did a survey.
Takes a village.
Yeah, yeah. Did a survey, and were able to remove it from the flood plain. And, and this, this structure is probably about 10, 15 feet uphill from it.
Yeah, I walked by it this morning, and I looked at it, and I thought it was uphill.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I, I saw, I saw you painting your porch.
When did you have the survey done?
Uh, two years ago, I think.
During COVID.
Okay. It's everybody's timeline now. Okay. One thing that, you know, not going to harp on it, but one thing that probably should have been included in here per our code and per our checklist for a special use permit is a short form EAF.
Okay.
That's not here, but I believe that this is going to be a type 2 under seeker, which is not subject to review under seeker. But, you know, in the future, anything like this, any special use permit application requires an EAF.
Okay.
Just, you know, just kind of a note there for you. But you, I think you did a great job as far as the application is concerned, the pictures that you provided, you know, that was, that was very, very nice.
That's off Gary's, Gary's guidance.
That's why he's here. Does anybody have any other questions? Allison, do you have anything?
I don't. I agree, the application was very thorough.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, Deb?
Sure.
Uh, when you mentioned petitioning the village for water and sewer, would that be for a new tie-in at the street, or would that not be necessary if they were tying into the existing structure?
No, that would be necessary in either case.
Okay, because you're adding volume.
I believe, right, Tressa, yeah, because you're, you're adding, you know, more usage.
I, I believe it would be, because it's another dwelling, so you're going to have a separate metering.
Okay.
And, uh, usage.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Good question, though.
And the village, the Department of Public Works will review the connection plan, just to make sure that, you know, how you're proposing to connect, you know, whether it be to the existing lot or right at the street, you know, they'll review that and grant you approval.
Okay. Which, I mean, we don't have any, we're not at that point yet, but, you know, just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, what, what will be required, what the village will be requiring.
And this board could always, you know, fulfill its role under the zoning law in reviewing the application for special use permit, and it can always, you know, grant the decision. If the decision is to approve, you can have a condition in it that the connection plan for the utilities have to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
No one has anything else?
I live almost across the street from you. I'm in Marty Walworth's old house, the big gray house.
Oh, great.
Yes, and I see you out there working. You probably hear my dog. Sorry.
If I might, just, just a question. Nothing regulated, that, I like the drawing of the picture you sent with the awning or canopy over the porch, and I know you said that you weren't doing that. Something you might consider on, because senior citizens and the snowfall and rain.
Yeah.
Just kind of a little covers that don't have to rush, black ice, whatever you want to talk about.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Thank you.
Good thought. See, this combination of the two borders is already working out. Okay, um, one thing, if no one has anything else, one thing that Allison and I did prepare kind of today was a resolution document which basically says that, you know, we are approving the special use permit and approving scheduling a hearing the next month, which is, I believe, June 26th is our next meeting date, because everything has to go through a public hearing, whether or not we approve it or not, it still has to come before the public. And so, has everyone had a chance to read the resolution document?
And I'll just note, if I can, Deb.
Sure.
Um, this resolution document, in addition to scheduling a public hearing on the special use application, it also classifies the action under seeker. You'll see in the whereas clause, it says, "The application involves the replacement of an existing structure on the same site and construction of a minor accessory of pertinent residential structure." That language is taken from the seeker type 2 list. Under both of those sections, this would qualify as a type 2 action. It's, it's a replacement of an existing structure on the same site, and it's construction of a minor accessory of pertinent residential structure. And under the DEC seeker regulations, both of those activities would fall on the type 2 list, so exempt from review under seeker.
If you want a copy of the resolution, you know, to read it before we continue, there's, I put a couple copies on the back table there, if you want to take a look at that before we, you know, I'll give you a minute to read that.
Thank you. I didn't get one.
You didn't get one? You weren't here. You were late. You didn't even have a lay pass.
Sorry.
Do we want to add the contingent upon?
Well, this is just a, a resolution to schedule a public hearing.
We don't want to add, then, that, that they will seek, you know, the DPW's approval, blah, 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 blah. We don't want to do that now?
We can consider that as a condition when the board's ready to act on the application, ready to do a final vote to approve or...
Okay, so that, yeah, okay, not the draft resolution, okay.
Should, should, should we also ask to see the engineer's report that says that this is not in the flood plain?
Well, that was one reason I asked when, you know, it was done. Do you have anything that documents that?
Yeah.
Okay.
How should we send that to you?
How can you get it to us? You can either drop it off at the village offices, you could email it to our admin, if you'd want to drop it off and just...
The other thing, too, is that, that, that's only talking about the, the structure, the house structure. If you look at, at the map, I think, I think you can look at the cent, or the, the parcel map for Albany County and, and put the, the flood plain on it, and it, you'll see that it's not in the flood.
Yeah, you can. I've seen it.
Okay, okay.
So I don't think, because I, because what we were getting out of the proposal was our, with our home structure, not...
Okay, not, not...
You could probably check into FEMA, too, because I'm in a flood plain, so, please, I pay flood, flood insurance, so believe me, FEMA has all their information.
Gary, you've done the overlay and...
Yeah, I've seen it.
Okay, all right.
So do you still need us to turn that in?
Are you okay? I mean, if it's two years old and it's only the, the existing home, I don't know how it pertains to this application.
But, but, but Gary says that he's got that structure overlaid on the, on the flood zone layer.
That it's not in it.
It's not. Yeah, so when you bring up the Albany County interactive mapping, you can bring up that as a, a layer, and that structure, where their structure's going to be built, is not in the flood plain area.
Oh, okay. That, that, I, that, that's fine.
All right, all right, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, then. I'm not going to read all the whereas. Everyone can see that. So if everyone's ready, now therefore be it resolved as follows by the Planning/ Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Altamont, Albany County, New York. The ZBA determines the application is complete for the purposes of its review. The ZBA hereby determines that the proposed use qualifies as a type 2 action, exempt from review under seeker pursuant to, to six NYCRR, six dot one seven five dash two and nine. A public hearing on the application shall be held on June 28th, 2022. It is further resolved that the Village of Altamont ZBA hereby authorizes and requires the board chair, secretary clerk, and our village attorney to take appropriate steps to effectuate the resolution, including any filing and distribution requirements. Whereas the resolution was declared adopted by the Village Zoning Board of Appeals, could I have a motion to that, please?
So moved.
Who said that? Danny?
Second.
Bob? Uh, I guess I'll, I'll do roll call. Or you want to do it?
No, go for it.
Okay. Danny?
In favor.
Bob?
In favor.
Sal?
In favor.
Simon?
In favor.
Barb?
In favor.
James?
In favor.
And, in favor. Okay, all in favor. Okay, thank you. So you will be getting, you know, I don't know if Ginger will send you a notice, but the, the public hearing will be June 28th at 7:00 PM here in the village office.
Do we need to work with this, too, or the Department of Public Works before that, in advance of that?
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to get things started, just that if there are any questions that come up during the meeting from the public or anyone else, you know, on the board, that you'd, you'd be able to say, you know, "Yeah, we've got the ball rolling. Here's what we've done, blah, 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 blah."
I'll get you Jeff Muller's contact information, and then you can reach out to him and explain to him what's going on, and not let him know that you're going to be contacted.
I, I've spoken with Jeff.
Oh, okay.
I, I actually forwarded him the application, the special use permit application, but, you know, definitely contact the village clerk, Patty Blackwood, and just ask how you go about doing that. Because I think, and I'm not sure, I think the way it works is that you contact the village, the village sets it up with Jeff, Jeff contacts you, there's a, you know, kind of a, I don't know what you wouldn't want to call, but, steps you have to take. You can't just go right to the... Okay. Great, thank you. So, good luck. Looking forward to seeing you. And I think it's an awesome idea that you're taking your parents in. I think that's, that's wonderful.
It's neat.
Okay, so then the next item on the agenda is a special use permit request from Horber's Honey Pot LLC, James Kelleher, to operate a storefront with in-store sales, online sales, and computer repair at 996 Altamont Boulevard. Has everyone had, is the applicant here? Okay, hi, James. Has everyone had a chance to review the application?
Yes.
Does anyone have a question on anything for the applicant?
Yeah, there was no site plan.
Right.
Parking lots, what exists now, and so that we can determine if there's any additions that may need be needed.
Yep, good, yeah. I, you know, I, I thought the same thing, Danny. And what we're saying is, there, we have an application, and we know it's an existing building, but there's nothing that says where it's going to, where the new storefront is going to be located. It doesn't depict the parking that you have set aside for that. You know, we want to at least see some type of sketch that shows, you walk in this front door, we don't even know where you're going into that structure, you know? So we have to see something like that. If you refer to, I think it's 35537 of our code, it'll kind of dictate exactly what you, you need to give us. You know, some of the stuff is really specific to new construction, but without, you know, without actually seeing everything and where you're going to be locating it, we, we can't really tell if it would have an effect on the neighboring holt. So, I don't know if I, did I state that correctly, Allison? I mean, I think...
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think that the submissions, you know, understanding this is a reuse of an existing non-residential building or storefront. I think a sketch of the existing building, you know, to the extent that he has a site plan from when the building was originally approved, I don't know that he has that, you know, that would be good to have. Otherwise, you know, a sketch of the existing building, the parking that you're going to be using in connection with the, the retail store that's going to be available to customers, maybe some photographs of the existing building for the record. If you have any information about the sign that you're proposing to put up, that would be helpful. You know, I agree with Deb, you know, some of the application requirements, I think specifically speak to a, a new building construction, which we're not dealing with. But I think a little bit more information about the site that would allow us to review and determine the use meets the criteria for our special use permit would be, would be helpful.
I grew up with a little site plan. I haven't got a chance to make copies yet. I was just over there a little while ago.
Oh, okay, all right.
As far as, like, I could go run some...
Yeah, we'll let Gary run over and make a couple copies at least for, for the board.
It's not like a beautiful artwork.
It's all right. We just, you know, need to see a little bit of what, what you're planning. And the other thing is, are you, are you adding to an existing sign, or are you putting up a new sign?
Yeah, it'd be like the, the same, you just take off the caps and then put the, the new one up. They just snap together.
So it is a new sign?
The new cover. The, the pole is still there. He's still...
Oh, I see what you're saying. All right, okay.
So if you use the same pole and just, like, unsnap the, the plastic sign, then you put the two new ones, they snap together.
Okay. That, you, you, because there is also an application for a sign permit, and, you know, there will be a, a drawing associated with that. That would go to Gary. That's not something that the, the zoning board would approve, but that would go directly to Gary?
And I did plan on putting an application in for that, but I was just waiting to, to me, it did make sense to put in...
To, to go forward. Right, right.
Because it's going to be a slow process to get the store. That's why I think it'd take two months after I'm there to get the store up, up in the online first.
Okay, all right. How many employees do you plan on having there?
Four to six.
Oh, yes. That's a good point. Thanks, Tressa.
My name's James Kelleher, by the way, though. Thank you.
Good to meet you. Good to meet you. So we're asking about employees, so at any one time, how many employees do you have?
Four to six.
And how many parking spaces do you see for those employees?
Probably two. They're, they're not all going to be there at the same time. It'd be like, probably two at a time, two to three.
Okay.
And they won't all be in the store either. Thank you.
Yeah?
I, I'm going to ask the same question of, of you that I did to the previous people, that again, DEC's EAF mapper says that this property is in the flood zone. So, is, is the building in the, you know, the, the, when DEC says a property is in the flood zone, it means any part of that property. But, so I don't know if the building itself is in the flood zone. And if it is, then I think the village code calls for a flood plain development permit.
I think that applies to new construction.
That's only new construction?
Yeah.
Well, wouldn't that be for the, the owner of the property? He's renting.
Right.
So that would be the owner's of the property's responsibility, I would think.
And wouldn't that already have been done, as far as that building is concerned?
Right. I think that those permits are required for new construction in the flood plain, because they have to make sure that what's being constructed isn't going to have an adverse impact on the surrounding area. So is, is building a new structure, they're going to displace floodwaters further? Does the site need to be elevated? Do you need to floodproof any utilities that'll be serving the building? Here, it's all pre-existing construction. It's a reuse of an existing non-residential space, and that actually also is a classified as a type 2 action under seeker, so it would be exempt from review under seeker.
Well, while this has nothing to do with the permit before us, I, I walked by it this morning, and I, I think there are apartments below grade. And if it's in a flood zone, I don't understand what's going on.
There's the laundromat.
There's a laundromat, but there's also apartments. And if there are apartments below grade in the flood zone, that is, that's kind of strange.
It used to be the oldest one.
You know, that does not have anything to do with this application. It's certainly something, you know, we can look into. There most likely were certificates of occupancy issued for those units. They have to have been for them to be legal units. They may have gone, you know, that may have been constructed years ago before the village adopted its flood plain development law requiring the flood plain development permit. It could have pre-existed, you know, the mapping. I, I don't know the history of the site, but if they have legal COs, it is a legal dwelling unit.
Is this, I can't see this, Danny. Is this pink?
The, the pink would be the flood...
What is it? I can't see. Is that, is that Altamont Boulevard that's in question?
The little yellow, yeah.
Made for the visiting bear. Because Altamont Boulevard, so he would be, you know, like, right around the corner.
All right, so then it's not. Just so everybody sees, so he's right in here.
Could we ever get, have Ginger give us a copy of the, that?
Oh, what?
The flood plain?
He, he's...
In...
Wait.
Where, where, where is this?
Just a copy of that for the, for the flood plain?
Right here. I know, I can see it here.
Are you going to be?
Yeah. Or Ginger?
Yeah, I mean, could Ginger? Any one of us can go, oh, and, you know, get this. But Gary?
Well, well, this, this...
Can you send me the, you sent it to me before, I think. Could you send me the link to be able to, the, the mapper thing, so that I can send it to everybody, and then we can all do?
Thank you. That would be super. I, we haven't seen that. I don't think any of the planning...
I just got, I got a question for you. Because there is apartments there and the laundromat, you were saying that it's going to be between four and six spots that you're going to use, and they're not going to be there all the time?
I'm going to have four to six employees, probably two spots at a time.
Okay. And I would kind of like to maybe add with that, too. You say 24 hours a day with limited store operating hours. So obviously, you know, people coming in and out between 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM. When you say 24 hours, that's, that's the internet, right? Because you do deal with the internet?
Not, not, not the store part.
Okay, so you're not going to have...
Because I, I work another job, too. I'm a longshoreman, and then sometimes I might have to go there at night to pack things.
Got you, yeah, got you.
Can I just ask a question? You know, in the application materials, you know, the, it looks like there's a verbal agreement right now with the property owner.
Yes.
You know, if the special use permit is approved, there would be a written rental agreement. I, for purposes of you being the applicant, I don't think we can issue the special use permit to Mr. Keller. I think it's got to be issued to...
John Donato?
Property owner at this point. Yeah, because I mean, if there's no, you know, kind of legal agreement in place that, you know, Mr. Keller has an interest in the property, I think that the special use permit would have to be issued in the name of the property owner. It would apply and permit the use in that site, but I think we would have to list the property owner as the permit holder, because we have, you know, there's just no legal interest in the property right now for you to, you know, kind of have the permit issued in your name. But it, it would still authorize the same use. I think it's the same thing we did with Curry Potter.
Yeah, we did, same thing with the...
Right.
Tattoo parlor as well. Jeff, Jeff was the app, yeah.
So maybe we can ask you, Mr. Keller, if you could, you know, submit something in writing from Mr. Donato, you know, kind of authorizing you to pursue the application on his behalf.
All right.
And he, he would acknowledge that, you know, the permit would be issued in his name as the property owner.
All right, yep.
Also, there's parking on both sides of the building.
Yes.
So I don't know if parking would be a concern.
Parking, I mean, there's parking for the laundromat on both sides of the building. Then there's parking for the tenants. I, I don't know what Mr. Donato has specific to each apartment and/or laundromat at any given time.
To my understanding, the left-hand side of the building is for tenants, if you're standing on the street.
Say that again?
Three spaces in the back for tenants, too.
For tenants?
Yeah, if you're standing on Altamont Boulevard.
Yep.
Left side's tenants, right side's laundromat, with, I believe, three designated spaces in the back for tenants, too, because there's apartments in the back. Because there's apartments in the back of the building.
Right, right. So again, I don't know how many spaces are there total. But, yeah, I just want to make sure that your store or your employees aren't going to take away from something that has been predefined for tenants or for the laundromat. Dean?
I remember when I would suggest that there is history for both.
Want to come up?
Sorry.
You know, you know the routine.
I'm old enough to remember some of this, right? I think there is at least a history for the apartments. I remember it came before the boards for the apartments. And I think also for the auto parts store. I don't know if the laundromat had already been established, but somewhere in there, there's probably some record of what was allowed at that time as far as parking. So I don't know if you can find that.
Yeah.
And this will be in the former auto parts store, right?
Yes. Can I add something, too? Just to let you know, too, I don't expect like a lot of in-store customers. Eighty-five percent of my business is going to be the online.
Except for me, who's looking for antiques. Very excited on something.
Yeah, it's just something that we have to, you know, we have to consider to make sure that we're not trying to, you know, overlay something that's already been set. You know, if the laundromat has five spaces set aside for any given time, and the tenants have six spaces set aside for any time, and there's a total of 12 spaces in there, this is just all theoretical, you know, you've got one space. So we just need to make sure, and, you know, maybe if you come, you know, when you come back before us, you can actually depict what spaces are yours. Maybe John has something planned, how many spaces you have, how many spaces the tenants will still have, how many spaces are reserved for the laundromat. Then we can get a better idea, say, all right, yeah, they can do that. Even if he has 50 customers in the store at one time, we're still good. You know, that's what we need to know.
All right, yeah, I'll find out.
And I think in the meantime, we can probably look on our end to see if there are any records on file for any previous special use permits issued right the auto parts store.
That's what I was thinking. To have to check.
Yeah, and you know, if, if maybe John Donato could do this, is just to lay out the spaces, you know, how many there are, and then tag each one of them and say, you know, these four are the laundromat, these six are the tenants, so that we can see, you know, we just got to make sure that, one, you're not going to disturb any of the neighboring houses. You know, that's probably first and foremost. Second, is it allowed use? You know, third, given worst-case scenario, are we going to displace anyone's parking situation? Or, you know, anything such as that? This helps, this definitely helps. This, is this the front of the building?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no parking in the front?
No.
Okay. And there's going to be one entrance?
There's the front entrance for, that's where the public.
Customers would connect?
Then there's the back entrance, yep.
Is it handicap accessible?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, it has stairs on the left-hand side and the ramp on the right.
Yep, yes, yep.
Now, you said there's a rear entrance on that?
Yes.
Does that lead directly to the exterior?
Yeah, well, you have to go out and there's a door. You go, so there's a door in the back, and then there's a door to the left.
Are you thinking for egress in the event of emergency?
Yeah. It's pretty accessible.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have anything else? I know I'm not thinking of everything. And, you know, I hate to say, yeah, this isn't enough, but it helps. I don't know that we can go ahead, Allison, with a resolution contingent, or if we.
We can, yes. And I, you know, I prepared a resolution. I didn't bring copies of it because I wasn't sure if we were going to ask for additional information. But what we can do, you know, here, you know, kind of the options, the board can, you know, we've asked the applicant to come back with some additional information. You know, we can set a deadline on that, say, you know, can you please have that information back in two weeks? And if you're able to do that, the board can authorize scheduling the public hearing at this time for the June meeting, with the understanding that that information has to be received in the next two weeks. That would give the public a chance to review it prior to the meeting. And then if you aren't able to get it together, if you need more time, the board just, you know, wouldn't publish the notice of the public hearing, and we'd come back again in June and discuss where you're at with getting additional information. If you want to do that, Deb.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's also, if you remember, it's important that you have a law, a letter designating that you're applying on his behalf.
I'm going to call him right after that.
He's got to be sold out, authorized, signed, whatever.
Yep.
Do you want a new application, Allison? Should we have a new application for that?
You know, it probably would be a good idea just to have him fill out, you know, a new application form with him listed as the applicant and have him sign it. I think that would be fine as for us, as opposed to like a letter.
Right, okay.
And I, you know, the board, I can, I can kind of read the resolution that I had prepared, and we can discuss what we'll add in here with the requirement for the deadline for the additional submissions.
Okay, all right, that works. Everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you, Allison.
So it's resolution classifying action under seeker and scheduling a public hearing on special use permit application. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Village of Altamont received an application from Porter's Honey Pot LLC, James Kelleher, for special use permit approval for the operation of a retail store in an existing structure located at 996 Altamont Boulevard in the village's B General Business Zoning District. Whereas retail stores are permitted in the B zoning district by special use permit. Whereas the proposed retail store will occupy an existing non-residential structure, and there are no exterior improvements to the building or site proposed except for new signage. And whereas the applicant submitted an application for special use permit on April 28, 2022. Whereas the reuse of an existing commercial structure or a structure containing a mix of commercial or residential uses for a use that is permitted by a special use permit is a type two action exempt from review under seeker. Whereas the ZBA reviewed the application materials and additional information relevant to the application. Now therefore be it resolved as follows by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think number one, we would say, the ZBA requires the submission of a revised sketch map and revised application form listing the owner of the property as the applicant and signed by the owner of the property. Whereas, or I'm sorry, number two, if the additional information requested by the ZBA is received within two weeks of this meeting, the village board will proceed with scheduling a public hearing on the application to be held on June 28, 2022, at the village hall. That'd be seven o'clock PM.
Seven PM, yep.
And then number three, the ZBA hereby determines that the proposed use qualifies as a type two action exempt from review under seeker pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5 subsection 18. And then it's further resolved, the village board, I'm sorry, the ZBA hereby authorizes and requires the board chair, secretary clerk, and/or village attorney to take appropriate steps to effectuate this resolution, including any filing and distribution requirements.
Yeah, sounds good. Do we want to list what the revised sketch plan should have on it?
Or at least clarify for the.
Yeah, right.
Sure.
Well, I think it's just, well, right now, it's a parking issue for starters.
Yep, parking is, yep.
And then just, and realistically, it's just designated that.
Parking, you'll have to submit a sign, sign permit, but that goes to Gary?
Yep.
Yeah, is it just parking that we want?
Just parking.
Well.
No issue on, no issues on the sign? That he's going to put up? The sign if not?
Well, that, the sign permit goes to Gary.
Oh, okay.
We don't, we don't act on it.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, well, he's going to be in operation 24 hours a day, according to the submission.
I think he said, though, it was all the internet, though.
That's not going to be all the time. I just wanted to, if I needed to go in there at night, that I could.
Eight AM to eight PM, the actual store will be open.
And those aren't probably going to be the time, but just, just in case.
If, if, if you say in the application, it's 8:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
Yep.
And you find that you need to change that, and it needs to be 8:00 AM till 10:00 PM?
Yep.
You can't just do that. You'd have to come back before us.
Yeah, well, that's why I put 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. There'd probably be more like nine to five or nine to six. But special days, maybe like special holidays, open up at eight and stay open to maybe eight. So, but I don't see it, never being later than that.
And you'll be working on the computers or whatever anyway?
You're not going to have a full crew in there, all of your employees there, just from this hour to this hour.
No, the most two at a time.
And they're the hours you're saying they're open to the public, basically?
Yes, yes.
So are we good with just parking, then? Okay.
All right.
All right. So.
Do we need any square footage on the store? The rental space?
It should, don't you think that'll be included with the material we get?
Well, we want to make sure that it is there.
I can put that on the new plan.
You know, normally, yeah, normally we would get that. A lot of that is for new construction. But, yeah, I mean, if you can show, you know, the actual square footage, what will, you know, not so much the distance between the shelves, but, you know, just the whole square footage, we don't need anything, you know, exact. But just so we can see that there's no hazard, you know, to employees or to customers or, you know, that you have enough room to do what you're saying you're going to do. Yeah. Do we want him to submit an EAF since he has to do it again anyway?
It's, the application's exempt from review under seeker. It's pretty clear.
Okay, all right. Okay, so then do we want to make a motion to, can you read that, Allison?
To make a motion to approve the resolution we just read into the record?
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the resolution that was just read into the record.
So moved.
Second.
Who said so moved? Danny? And Sal? Okay, roll call, please. Danny?
Danny, approved.
Okay.
Approved.
Sal?
Approved.
Simon? James?
Approved.
And I approve. Okay, good. So we'll see you back here on June 28, either for the public hearing, or if you can't get the documentation in time, you know, you'll come back here then and give us what we're requesting tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, bye.
Nice to have a new business in the village.
It's what?
It'll be nice to have a new business in the village.
Okay. Allison, did you find out about the reviewing of the procedures in documents?
So right in the village zoning law, there is authority for the ZBA to promulgate its own rules and regulations.
Okay, okay.
So that's in section 35552, Zoning Board of Appeals Procedure. And it's subsection B5.
E as in Edward?
B as in Boyd. The Zoning Board of Appeals shall have the power to promulgate written rules of procedure, bylaws, and forms in order to fulfill its responsibilities under this chapter.
Okay.
There is no.
Village board approval.
Right. You've already been delegated the authority to adopt your own rules and regulations.
Good, good. So then, thank you, Allison. With that, number five on our agenda is review of Altamont, Village of Altamont Rules of Procedure for Zoning Board of Appeals Meetings from September 28, 2020, see underlying bold italicized charges, the changes. Did everybody get a chance to look at those changes? Basically, it was changing Glenny Ward to the ZBA and, yes. Everybody okay with the wording of that? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the updated rules and regulate, rules of procedure for ZBA meetings?
So moved.
Danny? Second?
I'll second that.
Bob? Roll call. Danny?
Approved.
Bob?
Approved.
Sal?
Approved.
Simon?
Approved.
Bob? Approved. James?
Approved.
Thank you. Okay, now, this would be specific to those of us who were on the planning board at the time. But number six is review of meeting minutes of February 22, 2022, planning board meeting. I didn't see anything eagle-eyed Barb. Did you find anything on that?
No, I didn't.
I looked. Anybody have anything?
I didn't.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve? And again, it can only be people that were on the planning board at the time.
I will motion it.
Okay. Simon? Barb, Simon, second it? Okay, roll call. Bob?
Approved.
Simon?
Approved.
Barb?
Approved.
Okay, and I approve. Okay, and then again, review of the meeting minutes of April 12, 2022, Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. Now, I don't know if that was a mistake. Zoning Board, you can help me with that. Did you have a meeting on April 12?
Yeah, we were here. All by lonesome.
But it's only you and James, so I don't think we have a quorum.
No. And I wasn't at that meeting.
And you weren't at that meeting? Okay, so we're going to have to.
It was Sal, Laura.
So there's only two, though?
Yeah.
So we don't have a quorum.
The last zoning board meeting?
Yeah.
There were three of us there.
But there's only two here to approve the minutes?
Because I wasn't at that meeting.
Oh.
Point of information?
Yeah.
Our counsel. We could, could we not still approve the minutes with this board?
Yeah, I think you can approve the minutes.
You can?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Then.
Well, now that we're all one.
Well, the minutes were prepared by the ZBA secretary. You know, the meeting, you know, was attended. I was at the meeting. I reviewed the minutes. I mean, I know I'm not a voting member of the board, but they, they were accurate in my review of them. You know, this board, you know, is now delegated with all the responsibility and authority that, you know, previously was with the zoning board and the planning board. You know, I think that you can approve the minutes based on the fact that they were prepared by the clerk at the time and, you know, provide a summary of what was discussed at the meeting. And if you want to add a note that, you know, that the minutes were approved by the newly formed ZBA on this date, you know, you can do that. But I do think that you have authority to approve them.
So would we all vote on approving the minutes?
And I'll just, you know, I'll just kind of say, I mean, that, you know, the approval of the minutes really doesn't have any, any kind of, I'll say, legal implications. You know, the minutes have been prepared under the open meeting.
Yeah, it's all been recorded. I mean.
Yeah, they have to be, they have to be prepared and made available to the public within two weeks of the meeting. You know, it doesn't matter if they're in draft form, and that's typically before the board would meet to approve them anyway. So, you know, they are a written record of what was discussed and the actions that were taken at that meeting.
Okay, that works for me. Okay, that works for me. So is, are, would just be Dan and Sal then that would approve it, or?
No, this board.
No, this, of this board.
Okay, alright, okay. Then could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two zoning board of appeals meeting? Danny?
So moved.
Okay, second? Sal? Okay, roll call. Stan?
Danny Ramirez approves.
Bob?
Robert Freeman approved.
Sal?
Sal approved.
Simon?
Approved.
Barb approved. James?
Approved.
And I'll just also note for the record that the action that was taken at that meeting was done pursuant to a written resolution that was voted on at the time and is on file with the clerk's office.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Before I adjourn, one thing I would like to note is Laura Murphy, who's a, a voting member of the board. And James is our alternate. Laura could not make it tonight, so James is sitting in on this meeting. Any future meetings that had to do with anything that we've discussed tonight, you will be, and Laura will be the alternate.
Okay, understood.
I have just a couple of questions. I noticed that Troy has applied for a six-month extension on Main Street?
Yeah, he didn't really need to apply for the extension.
Okay.
He hadn't brought in the documentation that he needed to bring in. He has since done that.
Okay.
And I have signed all those papers and left it on your desk, Gary.
Okay, okay. And then Bozenkill, no action on that?
That's all done. No, it's done. They brought everything in.
They brought all the money, everything?
Yep, they're all paid off.
Good.
At least up till what we require, right.
Good, okay.
So that, Allison, are you, that is what I was told about the alternate versus, do you?
I gotta check on that. In general, you know, alternates fill in when there is, you know. I have to check to see what local laws the village has adopted and to see, you know, kind of, my understanding is there's a local law in the books that allows alternates to fill in, you know, not just, you know, when the voting member is, you know, unable to participate due to illness, but also in cases of conflict of interest. It's kind of a broader scope that we have adopted a law that allows alternates to fill in. I just don't know if it specifically speaks to if an alternate has to sit in at one meeting if the regular voting member then, you know, doesn't get to continue deliberating on the application. My knee-jerk is that she would come in and she could participate in the review of the application. But I, I will check on that and I'll confirm it before we have the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I was curious about the same sort of, you know, on a practical level, if James sits in on this particular thing, that's Stewart's.
Dean, you probably should come up. We should probably make this all legal.
That's just one on a practical level, how you manage that. I mean, if he sits in on, on an issue like, okay, Stewart's done, but Stewart's. And then she sits normally, but she's not allowed to sit for a continuation of a Stewart's thing and he can't make it? You're starting to get, can you maintain a quorum?
Yeah, I, I don't think she wouldn't be able to participate going forward. I think in general, you know, a board member may abstain from taking a vote if they weren't present and hadn't reviewed the application for whatever reason. But if she reviews the application materials, is here for the next meeting, can attend the public hearing, you know, I don't see, I don't think that she would be prohibited from acting as a voting member and then the alternate would step aside in that case.
Okay.
But I will review that, confirm it for the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, because that's, you know, that's what I was told, you know, I'm not gonna throw the person under the bus, but, you know.
So you're saying don't get too comfortable?
I'll check it out. To be continued.
To be continued. Okay.
I mean, some of you, that's why they encourage the alternates to attend all meetings.
All meetings, right, right, yeah. And, you know, it's, like I said, that's one reason why, whether you're an alternate or you're a voting member, an alternate in my book, the only thing you can't do is vote. I encourage and welcome any input or any questions that the, you know, the alternate may have.
Well, it keeps everybody on the same page too.
It does, it does. And, you know, it, it's, it's an important role. And one warning, everybody that's been the alternate so far has wound up being the chairperson. On that note, nothing else? Anyone need to?
Just one question. I think I heard it, that your applicant Ken Ramonsky did pay the fees?
He did, yep. The Bozenkill, yes. Yep, he did. You know, everything else now will be based on if he applies for a building permit. Then, you know, then there'll be additional fees that he needs to pay. But as of right now, he's up to date on the, the stipulations that we had on the final class. Does anybody have anything else?
So that brings us up to date then with the planning board.
There is no planning board.
I mean, prior.
We've been abolished.
We've been wiped out?
Given that, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Simon. Barb, okay, roll call?
Danny Ramirez approves. Robert Freeman approved.
Sal?
Sal is approved.
Simon approves.
Barb?
Definitely approved.
James?
Approved.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Gary, for being Ginger. Thank you, Allison.